Alright, so it's a very light, regular agenda. We also have folks from APD here with a good presentation. So, going by the agenda, alright? Other local laws, held, they stay held. Remained held. The introduction of ordinances. Jack isn't here, Jack Flynn. Introduction is 126219. Did he say he was gonna come, or?
Yeah, he wanted to. But, and I guess he had had some discussions with Brian and the police department. So, maybe you want to touch on that after we get through this.
We can always go back to it. But, at this point, that ordinance will go to law.
Just goes to the law.
It's gonna go to the law committee. Yep. Ordinance is held, remain held. On introduction resolutions, this is mine, it's 396219R. It's for Lumber Street Apartments, it's Housing Authority Development. We have a couple of folks from the Housing Authority here to just give us a real quick explanation. So, will you all just come up? Sit or stand, or I'll have to let you have that. Sit down?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You're giving me a wish.
Thank you.
Yeah, standing. This is audio.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, just, will you just basically explain what's...
Who do we have here?
Oh, introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm De Ma, General Counsel for Albany Housing Authority.
Your first name again?
D, like the letter.
Hi, I'm Chiquita DiArbo, Deputy Director of Albany Housing Authority.
Okay, yeah, will you just explain?
Absolutely. So, Ida Yarborough Homes, it is located in the Arbor Hill neighborhood of, in our city. And, this is actually Phase Four. And, it is the final phase of our redevelopment strategy. Phase One, we created forty-one townhomes and garden style apartments serving tenants at below fifty percent of the area median income. Phase Two, and by the way, every single phase, we've had the support of the city, so thank you very much. Phase Two, we developed seventy-six apartments. And, Phase Three, we are looking at about six of ten homeownership units, and that's currently underway. So, the last remaining footprint within the Ida project site are these two high-rises that you may have seen driving down North Pearl. And, the skin desperately needs updating, and as well as all the units inside will hopefully get a total rehab. We are looking at a construction budget of around forty-three million dollars. So, that's a huge undertaking to update two-hundred-and-twenty-four apartments. And, we're hoping to right-size some of our studio apartments, combining them into one-bedroom. And, that's through our conversations with the residents. So, we're trying to follow the market demand.
I'm sorry, what did you say though?
Absolutely. And I'll try to talk louder, I'm sorry. Right now, existing, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-four apartments that are about sixty to seventy years old. And, you can imagine, we try our best to use HUD subsidies to keep them upgraded throughout the years. But, we do have some incredible needs over there. And, we are looking at a construction budget of forty-three million dollars. And, we are trying to update the skin of the building, as well as modernizing all of the interiors. And, we are going to reduce the two-hundred-and-twenty-four unit count to a hundred-and-ninety-six, just to right-size some of our studios, because what our residents have told us is they prefer the one-bedroom model. And, the way that we arrived at this project is initially, we selected the design team with our developer partners, Edmire Development out in Rochester. Where our design team, architects, and engineers, they spoke with the residents, looked at neighborhood plans, and they developed a scope of work that AHA has since approved. And then, we used our general contractor, Home Leasing, who has a prominent presence on Clinton Ave, to price out the project. And, at the closing of the project, we are looking at hard debt of about seven-point-six million. We are deferring four-point-six million of our own fees. And, we are also going to hold a note in the amount of six million dollars. And, what we're hoping to do with these a hundred-and-ninety-six units is to serve our residents who are, whose households make less than fifty percent of the area median income. And, most other private landlords can't serve this population because of cash flow issues. And, Albany Housing Authority has great experience serving this population, thanks to the annual subsidies from HUD, and as well as these pilot agreements and other agreements we make with various partners. So, it is our sincerest wish that the Common Council and the City of Albany would support our Phase Four project and grant us those pilot agreements.
Does anyone have questions?
The area income, what is the number?
For the City of Albany, it's really across the Capital District. And, last I checked, please don't hold me, at this point, I think it's in the sixties, like sixty-four thousand, somewhere along those, that amount?
Fifty percent of that.
Fifty percent of that.
Yeah, there's a scale that Novogradic offers for the Capital District. And, it breaks it down. That's correct.
I just have one question.
Absolutely.
But, the tower is down along seven-eighty-seven.
Yes.
You have a lot of discussions on that. Where do they stay?
So...
I mean, you were gonna go, well, the kitchenette's over, and I thought something might be open up. Is that moving along?
Well, I regret to...
My chief's not here, probably.
I regret to inform you that unfortunately, through the competitive funding round, we did not receive the tax credit awards that we had hoped for. I believe, within our region, there were twelve applicants, and there were two out of the City of Albany, and neither of the parties were selected. And, we have not received our technical assistance session with HCR, so I can't give more details on why it wasn't funded.
I haven't seen anything.
We do plan to reapply.
Absolutely. And, I should add that with this Ida Phase Four, we are seeking four percent tax credits, and that's as a matter of right, so it's not competitive. And, we are hoping to use our money to leverage about, I am so sorry, leverage about twenty-six million dollars in private investments.
How much?
Twenty-six.
And, I'd just like to remind everyone, this is affordable housing. I know if DJ was here, he'd probably ask about the jobs. And, it's a housing program. If we can get folks on these jobs, excellent. But, primarily, the benefit to this community and to the City of Albany is quality, affordable housing.
That's right.
That is, that's the benefit. If we can get the job.
I know it's Kelly's district, but I'm over here all the time. I don't stick my nose in the way else is district. But, I want to say, you guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
You guys are doing an excellent job. Holy shadow.
Thank you.
But, you got two buildings coming up. And, what's gonna happen with the two buildings? That's, you're gonna move them out of there, and you're gonna tear the two buildings down? What's gonna happen with that land right there?
Oh, so we're back to steamboat over by seven-eighty-seven.
Are you referring to steamboat, or are you...
No, over here, not a yard.
I had it, so...
We're not tearing those two buildings.
Oh, you're gonna say we're gonna tear them down?
No, no. It's a total rehab.
Oh, yeah, a total rehab.
Yes. And, I should add that all of our partners have great experience in preservation.
In the way, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying that what we're looking to do is renovate and expand the current studio units into one-bedrooms, larger one-bedroom units.
So, are all these tenants being relocated, as we talk, or...
No, not at this moment.
And, I think the idea is onsite to clear.
Floor by floor.
Floor by floor, kind of move folks around.
Yes.
And, it's been done in the past, so it's...
Relocations are expertise.
Yes.
And, just think about it, two-sixty and two-seventy, see how old and run that. The idea is to renovate inside and the exterior, which is huge, huge.
So, no, so from the two-sixty and two-seventy, the people there, will they be offered to move to the new part, while you're renovating?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I have a lot of people I know down there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call Kathy.
They already do. Any further questions?
So, this resolution doesn't look to me like we're approving the project.
This is about the pilot agreement, no?
Yes, of course.
Okay. So, the pilot agreement, I just want to make sure I understand this. You currently are not taxable under any circumstances for the property that you own.
Our federal housing stock, we are under a cooperation agreement, absolutely. The tax credit deals, because we introduced private investors...
This is about Albany City real property tax?
Yes.
And, you're saying the tax requiring you to pay?
No, I'm sorry. Ida, it's a little bizarre, because the two-sixty and two-seventy, we have an agreement with the city where we don't pay taxes. But, what happens is anytime we use tax credits to lift it out of the public housing standby portfolio, then we become taxable. And, because we can't cash flow the projects, by paying real estate taxes, we engage the city in these pilot agreements. That way, it keeps affordability for us, and that's how we are able to serve the people as low as thirty percent AMI, which private landlords just cannot.
So, what is the pilot? Do you negotiate, or do you go to a formula?
There is a formula. Traditionally, we pay about ten percent of the tenant-paid portion of the rents. And, however, when we do have hard debt, in this case, seven-point-six million, with the six-million-dollar note, we, you know, usually, we subordinate the pilot payments to the debt. But, with the debt, the city will never get anything. And, we're just trying to do our part and pay one percent of the tenant-paid portion of the rents, so that we are giving the city some money for the public services that we and our residents all enjoy.
What are you anticipating?
Absolutely. We are anticipating, here it is, about, like, seven-thousand dollars, seventy-two thousand dollars. Not thousand, I'm sorry, seventy-two hundred, I apologize.
What does that represent again?
That represents one percent of the tenant-paid portion of the rents.
I'm sorry. So, you're saying your entire payment of taxes is seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars per year?
Under the current projections, yes.
Those two projects, for the two towers, not our overall portfolio.
So, when you say, when you say that you want to recognize that you're paying for services, as Chair of the Finance Committee, and somebody who represents the district in which the vast majority of my homeowners are paying about half of that per year for their one-person, two-person, three-person, four-person household, it's a little bit hard for me to swallow that that is really any kind of real contribution on this.
What was it before, before you...
Before, it was, it was, we didn't pay anything because of the federal house, because of the federal cooperation agreement. And, I will say that I am a homeowner within the City of Albany, and I, my taxes are a little less than half than that. And, we, these are discussions that not only have we had internally, but discussions that I've had with the city, the Corp Council staff. And, the way that, I guess, we look at it, and again, thank you for the reminder that we're here for affordable housing, is we're following the spirit of the cooperation agreement, which is, we have these federal housing stock where we don't, we aren't required to pay the real estate tax, but we are voluntarily trying to go above and beyond what Congress is providing to us. And, you know, the logic is, I'm hoping that we won't be disincentivized to improve these conditions for our residents.
And, Phase Two...
It is tough financially.
You did approve in Phase Two a one-percent pilot as well?
Yes.
Just so you're aware.
Phase Two being the lime-green houses?
Yes.
Down there?
Yes.
That I had an issue with when it came before us at the last minute, and I still...
I had a problem with the price, because I told them it costs about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to build each one.
Yeah.
I can build a hell of a house for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Absolutely. And, I can tell you, right now, we are watching the state legislation very carefully, because that price might increase just by the virtue of us being a public housing authority, and a lot of our subsidies do come from governmental entities. We are required to use various wage rates that I myself don't have to in my own home.
So, if we can go back to, if we do not grant the pilot, how much money... First of all, does this include school tax, the seven-thousand-two-hundred? Does that include school tax?
This would be the total amount that we would pay to the city.
Total amount, and then, does that get a portion between the school district and the city?
That I'm not sure.
We pay directly to the city, so I'm not sure how it's divvied up.
And, I can say that even with the construction budget, it was forty-four in April. We're continuing to do value engineering, because we're not cash-rich, we're not, you know, the private developers, where at the end of the day, we get our developer fee and drive off on a bed. This project, for us to ask for the one percent, that is what we can afford, and that's what we've done in previous projects. And, our biggest concern is being able to cash flow this, because we will need private investors, and we do need to answer to all of our regulators, their underwriters, and our investors.
Kelly?
So, can I, can I just, so, if we did not grant this pilot agreement, how much would you be required to pay in the way of taxes?
To be honest with you, if we did not engage this renovation project, we would end up not paying anything to the city. I have not, our partners have not given me projections for what that percentage would be if we went ahead. But, I would guess, I would guess ninety-nine percent that we probably have to scale down this project a lot, if we can continue at all. And, I'm not saying that it's a threat, but it honestly is just the underwriting process. And, another thing I will say, if I were to add an improvement to my own home, I can spend whatever I want, and maybe cut corners somewhere. But, with our multiple layers of oversight, it isn't just, you know, the Davis Bacon wages or the state wages. It's also, we have to fulfill reserves under, you know, various HUD programs. So, it is a lot of cash that we have to put up ourselves.
To ensure that we can maintain the property.
Absolutely.
I know DJ was here, the questions would be asking, is there a project labor agreement or anything like that on this? They've been looking to get just some jobs in the neighborhood, you know?
There isn't. I mean, the Housing Authority has the Wage Center that does training.
So, we're back to that.
So, right, right. And, they're, like, with Ida Yarborough, they were focused on that job, that comes from the, the Wage Center also. But, by design, it's not a, we want jobs, we need jobs, but HUD doesn't require any of that stuff.
And, I will add that through HCR, we do have goals for women and minority business enterprises, and we do have Section Three program in place that Sandy Pavement does for, monitors for us.
Quick question, and I also was, was there a question here, but, um, the executive board, there's been some discussions all throughout urban cities, not to just, like, it's basically like affordable housing, sometimes it's concentrated in low-income marginalized communities. Are you guys thinking about just kind of spreading out to other communities inside the City of Albany, instead of just focusing on, like, Westfield, Arbor Hill, and the South End? Is that something that's being discussed?
We're always looking for opportunities to provide additional housing.
And, can you speak on the environmental friendliness of the buildings that is being created?
Oh, absolutely. And, I'm assuming the green roofs?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. So, we're very proud of the green roofs. That was the last ad in Phase One of Ida Yarborough, and that was thanks to a grant, a million-dollar grant, I want to say, from NYSARDA. And, the green roofs do more than just present aesthetics for the neighborhood, there's bio-retention properties, so it helps with this, the stormwater treatment. And, also, it helps our tenants alleviate their utilities bill, because there's that insulation factor. And, we did outfit the roofs to be solar panel compatible, but we didn't want to overkill it with the green roof and the solar panel. But, we are exploring solar, anything to reduce the utility cost for us and our tenants. And, we do try to incorporate the latest and greatest materials. And, HCR Design Manual is very particular.
And, Mr. Bowden?
Does this project go before the planning board?
Yes, yes.
And, so, when you talk about the water retention issues, then that also is part of your, our current requirements of the USDA? You're not going above and beyond what is required of the USDA with regard to water retention, are you?
I am not sure about that, but I'm happy to follow up with an answer. I will say, during the closing of Ida Phase Two, what we realized was, and this is the other thing, we don't just go out and say, "We're gonna build this." It's multi-year planning process. And, in between us trying to close the project to actually closing, I believe, the code relating to stormwater treatment had changed. And, I know that our engineers at Chisenon worked very closely with the city and the planning board to address those issues. We tried to go above and beyond, but I don't want to commit to an answer. And, I will say that just today, I received an approval letter from Bragg Glass to, in support of this project. And, I think that was related to just zoning compliance. So, we are constantly in talks with the planning department.
Mr. Anani, and then we'll...
I have two questions. One, what's gonna happen to the...
Sorry, Mr. Bowden. No, no, go ahead. I called, no, I called you Mr. Anani, so, I apologize.
Hey, that just makes you think I'm younger. I appreciate that.
No, I'm Grant Hansen.
I appreciate that.
Sorry about that.
That means you're eighties, I don't know. I wanted to know, what's gonna happen to those, those twenty-eight families that will lose? You're cutting back the units, I understand, just want to give more space, but one problem that we have, as you know, is there's a shortage of full of housing in our city. So, we're cutting down twenty-eight additional units. How many is worth that?
I am so glad you raised that question, because relocation is truly our expertise. One, I think there's multiple strategies that we employ anytime we relocate someone. So, ahead of the renovation time, we might stop leasing up at certain units according to our tenants. First of all, each tenant is assigned a specialized caseworker to uncover their needs. If you are, if you need handicapped accessible units, we'll make sure to place you in a ground unit. So, we have a special team that works with each tenant. We try to stop leasing up vacant units, so that we can relocate some people. We have the ability to issue Section Eight vouchers. And, part of my job is to approach HUD for permission to lift this project site out of public housing. And, there's the Uniform Relocation Act that protects our tenants. We pay them to move with the voucher. They can move, I believe, anywhere in the continental U.S. and Virgin Islands.
And, Virgin Islands, that's correct.
Yep. And, finally, we are so hoping to submit the, resubmit the application for steamboat under the early round this year, because in that application, we are trying to create thirty-seven new units.
So, I don't know, because some company, so if someone doesn't want to move to any other unit, you would give them Section Eight, not a voucher, to assist them to move. What if they're not eligible? Because, if you make thirty-two thousand dollars per person, you'd be eligible for housing here for one bedroom, but you wouldn't be eligible for Section Eight.
Correct. Oh, in this case, we have a different type of voucher, called tenant protection voucher. Actually, I have no experience with it, because it's never came up. We've always been able to accommodate displaced tenants, but...
So, if you are over income in your question, or for Section Eight, what we try to do is accommodate them in terms of locating, you know, our properties that they do fall within the, you know, we have various programs that they may fall under within their, I would say, income guidelines. So, they may not be eligible for Section Eight, but they may be eligible to move into some other units that we own. But, we, I can tell you that we have done this since North Albany. We've had to relocate hundreds of families and continue to do it over the years. And, that is something that we pride ourselves on, being able to help these families relocate. We pay for the cost, and they also have first dibs if they, you know, income qualified to come back. You're welcome.
And, if I may add, we also started diversifying, we've noticed that, you know, everyone living together, they're all being thirty percent under AMI. That just is not a good situation for anyone. So, we have housing stock, we have buildings where someone making ninety percent AMI is living next to someone making thirty percent AMI. So, we can accommodate a lot of different types of tenants.
And, some of these properties, you don't have, there's no restriction in terms of income.
I'm a little curious about the fact that tenants want to move away from the studios, which makes sense to me. On the other hand, at the, at one of the developments near my ward, the developer is saying that people want studios. Could you tell me, what is the current square footage of your studios, and what will...
I don't have that question off the top of my head. And, I would, if I gave you a number, it might be at a different development. We have several studios at different locations. But, what I can tell you with our experience with studios, is most people, they'll accept studios out of, I would say, urgency. But, then, after a couple of months, they want one-bedrooms. That has been more of, they're a little harder to fill for us, in terms of, you know, most people want a privacy of having a one, you know, their own bedroom, having a door. And, that has been more of the, I would say, the voice of our tenants and what they would prefer. I don't know, in terms of the developments that you're referring, developers that you're referring to. I do know out in the private market, that a lot of students are looking for studios and, you know, for that type of lifestyle, or living arrangement. But, the families that we have right now are really seeking to move into one-bedrooms and out of the studios that we currently have.
And, our bedroom sizes are dictated by HUD and HCR Design Manual.
I also thought that public housing is looking to move away from high-rises, and some buildings are actually being torn down. Why the decision here to renovate, how many stories is it?
Seven. Seven stories, and to be very...
It's not only seven stories?
There's seven, yeah. No, to be completely honest with you, it's funding availability. We would love to, you know, our strategy has been to de- densify, which is why Ida Yarborough looks the way it does today with the low rises and the garden-style apartments. If we could redo everything, we would, but repurposing is our...
And, demolishing pretty much triples the cost. It costs a lot of money for us, too.
And, the total renovation, again, is sixty-four?
Oh, the, we're looking at forty-three million right now.
If you, the thing is, the idea was, the thought was, I wanted to pass it on Monday. But, if we want to have further discussion, if people have a problem with it, we can, we can do that.
I have a couple of things I would like to be provided. I don't know that I need further discussion, but I'd like to see the, the design documents. I'd like to know the answer to my question regarding the square footage, and I'd like to know the answer to my question regarding what would be the taxes. I think that we have an obligation to know what would be the taxes paid on this before we're, except, I mean, it's, I don't know that it's gonna be determinative of my decision, but I think we need to look into this with our eyes wide open, and then, in terms of looking at other affordable housing projects in the city, and what do we do for those developers? Should we be treating them any differently than we're treating the Housing Authority in terms of, it's a tax evasion, I guess, pilot, not a tax?
So, we could, we'll just have further discussion. We don't have to pass it on Monday. Do that, we'll have...
Well, we are, we are hoping to submit the application for the four percent at the end of June, so that we can shift our focus to resubmitting steamboat twenty.
Now, I have an issue with the Housing Authority constantly coming to us at the last minute, as opposed to, you've been working with the planning board, and essentially not giving us more time to...
Apologize for that.
But, I will say, right, it is. But, what I, what I'll say to that, the last time the Housing Authority was before us, it's not, it doesn't have to be passed now. It's not an absolute, it's not mandatory. They would like it, actually, us passing this would put them ahead of the game. But, if we don't, and we have further discussion, we're not gonna slow them down, we're not gonna slow them down. They want, they want to submit it with the application, submit a resolution of support from this body with the application, but we don't, it's not a rush.
If I may, because the taxes were pilot payments, whatever you like to call it, it's part of the underwriting process, unless we represent a HCR that we have all of our dollars accounted for, we can't proceed with the project. So, that's, that's the urgency. I certainly don't need to rush any...
So, the resolution had to go with the application, that's what you said?
It bolsters the process.
And, this is our last meeting of June, so this is our special meeting.
I mean, I think Judy's just looking for some more information.
Okay, so, we're, we're planning on passing it Monday, but pending, we'll get, they'll get that information for you, Judy. Right, 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 right. Can you get it to Michelle for...
Absolutely. So, I just want to reiterate what you're asking, square footage of the studios at Ida? Is that correct?
Yes, they are currently in what you proposed, during one-bedroom.
And, the tax... Yeah, and the tax, what, clarify your question regarding the taxes, please.
What would be the taxes paid on this project if we didn't grant the pilots?
It would, if we did not grant the pilots, okay.
But you said it would be zero.
It would be zero.
Zero. So, it's 7210 compared to zero, at least it's something.
Right now, we're not required.
Then I'm not understanding something.
I'm understanding your question, which is what we would have paid if we went ahead with the project and did not receive this pilot.
So, that's the thing, is she's saying it would be zero if we wouldn't go forward? As opposed to there being any...
If we moved forward, right.
What the amount of pilots would be?
And, and it's not necessarily that if we don't get the pilot, we wouldn't move forward. It's that if we don't get the pilot, this project might not underwrite. So, I don't wanna, you know, present the impression that we're holding common counsel on this issue.
Okay.
And what was the third one?
Oh, the design documents.
And, um, the only thing I will warn is that it's all in flux right now. And of course, we see our resident...
I'm a little more curious about the exterior, what's being planned by the exterior.
Is there, are there any other requests? All right? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, just, uh, next in, uh, the agenda's resolutions, all are held except for Mr. Robinson's, uh, 346119R, the renaming, uh, Pennsylvania Ave, uh, Verumicus and Way.
And we may go forward with the three appointments if the meeting happens and they move.
Okay, so, that's, that's it for the, the regular, uh, agenda for Monday.
What are we down to?
Everyone, okay, so, we'll get APD, yes, yeah. I was waiting for a screen, I was waiting for a screen to roll in.
It's not happening.
I didn't even see that live out there.
It's not happening. I apologize. We had asked for a screen and a projector from IT, and it did not happen. So, we are going to make the best of what we do have.
Well, like, you want me to come around? That's fine, that's fine.
And so, I have this, I'm gonna give you guys, um, the, the charts and graphs that are within this presentation so that it's a lot easier for you to see. Um, and then I'm actually gonna take those back at the end. I did not get from our analysis center whether or not this is like actually publicly available material. It wasn't a question I had been prepared to ask.
Did you get one?
Yeah, there's more. Here's a color version, if somebody would like a color version. Um, so we kind of put this together at the last minute, and I apologize for that. Um, my name is Katie Clark, I'm the Anti-Violence Coordinator for the Albany Police Department. I've been in that position since 2014. I've worked for the department since 2008. Um, I'm joined by Chief Hawkins and Deputy Chief Hogan. Um, I am also happy to be joined by Harris Oberlander, who is the CEO of Trinity, um, who is integral in this grant, and Shoshan Yakub from Snug, who are also integral parts of what this is. Um, right now, I just wanna make it very clear that I am presenting just a portion of what our strategies are as they relate to responding to gun violence within the city. Um, these are just funded, uh, strategies from DCJS, the GIVE grant that they provide to us annually, um, and so I'll work our way through that. That grant is provided to us, the Albany County District Attorney's Office, and the Albany County Probation Department, and it's been that way since the beginning. We develop our strategies together and we all, um, carry out those strategies together. So, what is GIVE? GIVE is the Gun Involved Violence Elimination Grant. It's an annual grant from DCJS. Um, I hope you all can see that. After they conducted an in-depth analysis of crime data in New York State in 2013, they found that while most crime had significantly decreased since 2004, the only thing that went up was shooting homicides, and they were up by 6% across the state. And they were recognizing the significant economic, social, and personal consequences of shooting deaths, and it became their priority to reduce those shootings and aggravated assaults and jurisdictions nationwide. So, they first started awarding these grants in July of 2014, and will be in our sixth round of funding starting July 1st. They're awarded to 17 counties in New York State outside of New York City. And each jurisdiction throughout the state partners with the District Attorney's Office and probation for their awards and their strategies. So, the first thing that you'll see are, um, our shots fired numbers from 2014 through 2018, um, our shots fired incidents and shooting incidents, or times when a gun is fired and an injury or death occurs. The numbers tend to be consistent from year to year. We did have, um, our highest in the last five years in 2018 and our lowest of those numbers in 2016. Um, unfounded shots fired are incidents in which it can be conclusively, I'm sorry. Um, yes, unfounded shots fired are incidents which it can be conclusively determined that no shots were fired, so we can determine instead that there were fireworks, that a car backfired, or that nothing had happened at all. Unconfirmed shots fired are incidents for which we cannot conclusively determine that shots were or were not fired. The next graph that you'll see is the trends that we have in the past six years for both our shooting victims and our confirmed shots fired. So, the charts on the left side of that page is the trend line, um, with the number of persons shot from year to year, um, in the solid line and the trajectory in the dotted line, so you can see that we are going up, but the 2016 was our lowest year to date in quite some time. Over the last six years from January to December, um, you can also see that in terms of confirmed shots fired, that line seems to be going up. We had our lowest year in 2016. When we look at it month by month, what we do know is that July tends to be our worst month for both people injured by gunfire and also confirmed shots fired. Um, and with the overall trajectory being that in the spring, the shots fired tend to increase, they then start to decrease as the fall hits, it's much lower during the winter, and the cycle starts all over again. I know in the charts that you see, the lines on that right side are really hard to see. Um, the very thick solid line is 2019, um, the smaller solid line is 2018, um, and then there's a couple of dotted lines, the one that's closer to the top, um, is our five-year high, the one that's on the bottom is our five-year low, and the one right in the middle is our five-year average. For 2019, right now, we didn't wanna compare year to year because we're only a couple months into, we're halfway into 2019 at this point. Um, but as of today, um, when compared to this time last year, we are down 18% in terms of confirmed shots fired, and we're down almost 50% in terms of shooting incidents and shooting victims. So, last year... Yes, almost 50. Um, so last year, there were 17 incidents with 17 people hit by a bullet. This year, there are nine. So, this year is to a nice start. When we talk about GIVE strategies, each jurisdiction has to analyze their gun violence data involving geographic location, the time of the shooting, so that's our day and month, and motivating factors. So, was this a personal or group dispute, a robbery, a domestic incident, or something else? This helps us determine the nature of our violence that we are experiencing so that appropriate strategies can be selected to combat that violence. That being said, DCJS also requires that we use one of the following evidence-based strategies, or more than one, hotspot policing, focused deterrence, crime prevention through environmental design, and street outreach. We use three. Um, we do hotspot policing, focused deterrence, and street outreach. So, the first that I'll talk to you about is hotspot policing. This is focusing on a small geographic area where crime is concentrated. There are settings with significant clusters of crime that generate a large portion of the total crime reported in the broader community. That can be an address, that can be a couple of blocks, that can be a full street, but it's a geographic area. We identify that crime both through community calls for service as well as patrol calls for service. We also look at the hot people in those areas, and those are the people that are living in that area, that are committing the crime in that area, causing that area to pop up as a hotspot. And unfortunately, I can't show you in the next chart, but you do have 2019 in your graphics, is what our hotspots look like for shots fired from 2014 through the current date. So, this is gonna have, um, actually a moving chart to show you where our hotspots have been over the last, uh, five or six years as it relates to gun violence. 2014, 15, 16, 17, 18, and this year. Absolutely. I can, I can move this all the way around. Yeah, okay.
It's fine, I, I have a look at the map here.
Yes.
I know where...
Yes, so the map here is just 2019. Um, those are actually layered images, so I couldn't pull those apart to print them out. Um, but what we do know is that our hotspots are pretty consistent. Um, for what you see in 2019, the area right around Johnson, um, so this large red area here, um, tends to be First and Quail, First and Lex, and Second and Johnson, all pushed together, and that's pretty consistent year to year. Um, this smaller red area right now, um, this year, popping is Third and Manning. And then down here in the South End, that's a little new for this year, but that's Grand Street. Um, and that's, tends to be what we see when we look at the South End in terms of gun violence.
Could you go back to, um, 2018?
I cannot. I can have it run again. So, there's 17 with that same area, 2018, that same area, just broken up just a little bit. But it's still in that, maxes the First and Quail, First and Lex, and Second and Johnson. One of the things we also look at when we talk about, um, hotspots is conflict analysis. So, much of the gun violence that we have is rooted in disputes and conflicts, and so in order to try to anticipate where that gun violence is going to occur, so that resources can be applied to those areas in anticipation of that gun violence happening to quell it, we look at calls for service for narcotics activity, persons with a weapon, group annoying, fights, and gambling and dice games. Historically, those have led to fights, which have led to, um, guns being pulled out and people being injured. Narcotics activity?
Yeah.
Persons with a weapon, group annoying, fights, and then gambling and dice games.
Group annoying?
Group annoying. Where there tends to be a group of people.
Where are most of the dice games at? Does it change you or are they very...
They, they do vary. Um, they do tend to move around when we find them, we tend to try and break them up and not have them happen on the streets, um, and then they move.
I, I don't know if you'd touch on this afterwards, but the name of this, Capital Region Crimes, okay? I know yous work together, and basically, they're doing the same thing as this, or is each municipality, I mean, like as far as hotspots and they do the same thing?
Each jurisdiction is different. For us, the Capital Region Crime Analysis Center is our crime analyst shop, if you'll, if you'll call it that. It used to be the Albany County Crime Analysis Center, and then we started taking on some other jurisdictions outside of Albany County. Um, but when we talk about the GIVE grants, most of the other jurisdictions of the 17 counties, um, outside of New York City are engaging in many of the same things. Um, DCJS is pretty prescriptive.
But the communication here is helping between the...
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Because you hear, you know, everything, you know, from here to there in inner city and...
Right, some of our strategies and some of our issues that we had in the last couple of years are bleed overs from different communities, right? We had some issues with Troy. Um, you know, we, we see the same people, Troy's connected, you know, coming across the border, so we, that communication's... Thank you.
So, once we identify a hotspot and why that area is a hotspot based on the information that we receive from the Capital Region Crime Analysis Center, we try to determine what resources are available in that area already so that the community can rely on the community to address some of its problems. We engage, engage both business owners and residents alike, depending on what the problem is. We employ additional officers if needed, assuring that they are aware of the problem in the area, and we also engage with Snug to make them aware of the issues that we're seeing and have them conduct outreach to that area or that address, particularly as it's relating to gun violence or conflicts that we know are ongoing. Also, under the hotspot policing strategy, we use the Violent Offender Identification Directive. In 2012, the Albany Police Department, in conjunction with, then it was called the Albany County Crime Analysis Center, created a data-driven risk assessment tool that identifies individuals who are most imminent, in the most imminent danger of shooting someone or being shot. Research was conducted on the prior four years of shootings, looking at both suspects and victims, and what we found in their personal histories was that there were many commonalities for both victims and suspects. They had previous weapons charges, they were present on the scenes of other shootings, they had previous assaults, there was some documented gang activity, and there were multiple disorderly conduct arrests. The analysts then identified over 100 different data points, applied a weighted, applied a weighted scale, and then subsequently quantified the risk. So, if you were someone who had been shot before, that score would mean a lot more than a disorderly conduct arrest, but being at the scene of a shooting might be weighted somewhere in between those. The tool then aggregates those weighted scores and produces a risk-based hierarchy. We look at a cumulative, um, history, so that's the overall risk, and then we also look at a 90-day history, so the trend, to make sure that we're identifying the people that are most at risk imminently of shooting someone or being shot, being involved in gun violence. Once that happens, um, and we try and de-conflict the situation, so if we know there's an ongoing conflict and we're able to get resources in to talk to the, those individuals and try and stop that, we have our enhanced supervision unit officers make outreach to the identified individuals and work to understand the most effective way to redirect those in crisis individuals. And that can be achieved through employment, mental health services, substance abuse services, educational opportunities, rehousing, um, getting them assistance with resonades, it kind of is completely up to that individual and the family. When an arrest must be made, the District Attorney's Office is made aware of all background information and the outreach made to the individual, so they have some context for what's going on.
You mentioned gangs. Gangs on the upswing again, or are they still...
I, I mean, I would just say that we, we don't really like talk in terms of gangs for very good reasons. It's more, it's more groups, right? It's, uh, more affiliations, uh, you know, guys that are hanging out together in certain areas at certain times that we're looking at. Um, so that's kinda how we group them, you know? I mean, they used to traditionally be uptown, downtown, and those types of wars appear to be very clear, and now that's really not the case. I mean, a lot of people are living in, in very different areas than they were traditionally, so, um, we're living more in groups than, than classes.
So, the second strategy that I'll talk about is focused deterrence. When we do start looking at what we can in terms of, um, our shooting victims and our shooting suspects, we do see a very stark picture of what they look like. Um, the majority of our shooting victims are black males. When we look at the age, most of them are over the age of 31, um, but we do see another spike in the 21 to 25 age group. Um, so clearly, for us, the adult population of 21 and up are our most at-risk individuals. Um, there are some females in this, I don't want anyone to think that females are immune to being the victim of gun crime, but it is very predominantly black males. When we look at our gun homicides, and I wanna make this very clear, this is not all of our homicides, these are just the ones that involve a firearm. Um, we have a 67% adherence rate for being able to solve those and make an arrest, um, and so that means that we're really able to talk about what those perpetrators look like in terms of your typical kind of gun violence suspect. They're mostly black males. Um, during this time period, which is 2014 to 2018, there were two, um, black females that were arrested for gun homicides, um, and those arrested don't tend to fall into any particular age demographic. You can see here that they're pretty spread out between all of the different age ranges. Um, it's pretty even as opposed to who the victims are.
However, I need to note that I've never seen in any survey a breakdown that groups everybody 31 and over into, I mean, that's like...
It is a very large age group.
And that's, isn't that more than half the population?
It is, which is what kind of makes it all that more stark, um, striking to see that when you take everybody 31 and up and compare that to two sets of five-year age groups, the 21 to 25 and 26 to 30, that that's really the age group that we're worried about. It's that 10-year block, um, that is almost double.
However, when you were referring to this, you said the majority are in that age group, 31 plus, but if you, if you had breakdowns that were consistent of four-year ranges like you have up until that point, you'd probably have two or three in each one of the age ranges from...
So, 31 to 35 is, is closer to 20. When we start pushing up, 35 to 40, the numbers start dropping. As soon as we hit 50, we're talking one to two per five-year age group. Um, so, that 21 to 30, and then probably 31 to 45 for here, um, would be another significant set. But even part of the, the discussion is always, you know, that it's the teens and... But even part of the discussion is always, you know, that it's the teens, and for us, it's very much not the teens.
Do you have any information about that? So if we have the victims, these are those that were arrested?
The victims? No, these are the people that were shot. These are the people that were injured. In terms of victims, yep.
And these are the people that were arrested?
Those are the people that were arrested for homicides only.
Do you have any that were arrested for shootings?
So the reason I don't have that is that our clearance rate in terms of being able to make an arrest for non-fatal shootings is much lower. While we have a 67% clearance rate for homicides, our closed-by-arrest clearance rate for non-fatal shootings is 22%. So having good information about who those individuals are, it's just not reliable. And part of the issue that we have is that we have many uncooperative victims. So you can see on the next page, we have about 40% that we had to close because the victim didn't see what happened, couldn't describe who shot them, or has actually flatly said, "I am not cooperating." And that's one of the strategies that I'll get into a little bit later. It's a new strategy for us this year, where we know that there are some tools and things that we can use from other jurisdictions for how to increase cooperation, how to treat those cases a little bit differently, so that we can more successfully arrest those that are committing those non-fatal shootings. So under focused deterrence, the other intervention that we're using is the group violence intervention. This goes back to the distinction between gangs and groups. It's an evidence-based strategy from the National Network for Safe Communities at John Jay College. It allows for police and prosecutors to increase the certainty, swiftness, and severity of punishment by directly engaging with known offenders who are often group members. So the small groups of individuals who associate together often tend to commit crime together. We communicate clear incentives for compliance and consequences for criminal activity. And this also allows us to provide a fantastic framework for support and outreach services, so that those individuals can be communicated with about the other options that they have, the variety of services that the city provides in terms of support, outreach, and getting them into a different life. This is a partnership between the city, the Albany Police Department, the district attorney's office, Albany County probation, the U.S. Attorney's Office, parole, and the community. The key components of the group violence intervention are two communication tools that are face-to-face meetings between group members and representatives from that partnership. There's both custom notifications, and so those are one-on-one meetings with an individual who may be known to be having a conflict. There may be retaliation that we know is about to happen. This also may be a kid who has threatened to bring a gun to school, or has threatened to harm somebody in the community, so we can directly communicate with them and make sure that they understand the consequences of their actions and know the other services that are available to them, including mediation, if that's something that they're interested in. And then a call-in. So in both of these, it's a law enforcement message that any future gun violence will be met with clear, predictable, and certain consequences. And a group member's act of gun violence triggers an enforcement action against the individual, as well as their associates, for outstanding warrants, probation and parole violations, open cases, and any other current criminal activity. There's also a moral message from community representatives, that violence will not be tolerated, and an offer of help from social services for those that want it. We've held five call-ins to date. There have been 94 individuals who have attended, and we've delivered more than 200 custom notifications.
What kind of success have you done?
We've actually seen our, when we look at some of the motivating factors between, around our shootings and homicides, we do see that when we're doing this well, our group members who are involved in that violence decreases. So the motivating factors are different. It's, you know, those group disputes, that typical uptown, downtown stops happening. Individuals are more likely to take an offer of support. They engage with our support and outreach provider, which at this time is Trinity Alliance. They're reaching out more to Snug for de-confliction. And they're more willing to reach back out to our enhanced supervision officers, who are the officers doing the custom notification for future assistance. So support and outreach services is really a key with this strategy. It's providing help to group members, and that's a really critical aspect of this process. We hire one-point person with one phone number to allow individuals to have easier access to help in navigating through the multiple systems that it really takes to get through the things that you need to. Referrals come from a variety of sources. It's mainly the Albany Police Department's Enhanced Supervision Unit and Albany County Probations' give probation officer. We found that now that we have Trinity Alliance on board, where there are individuals who have dedicated to this for quite some time, that individuals are referring their friends, their family members, other group members, for support and help. They're getting the word out, like, "Hey, this guy can help you get a job. Hey, this guy can help you get into housing. Hey, this guy can give you advice." And so they're more likely to refer their friends. Sure.
Is the point person a social worker?
He's not a social worker by trade. He is somebody who has experience going through the criminal justice system, did federal time, was a gang member down in the city, has lived the life, and then moved into the social services field, so has some extensive expertise in working with individuals who are high-risk, who tend to be resistant, who need a lot of hand-holding, who might be younger, not really sure what they want, may not have finished high school, may have substance abuse histories, may have a really complicated family dynamic. So we really curated that position to make sure that it was somebody who would have street credibility reaching out to them.
Just give me a little idea what the enhanced supervision unit is.
It's three officers.
Oh, 70 seconds?
Yep, it's three officers. They're non-uniformed. They make outreach to individuals throughout the city. So the Violent Offender Identification Directive, when those individuals are identified, they make outreach to them to try and find out what's going on and what they can do to help. They're involved in a number of our community events. Two of them are heavily involved in our refugee outreach programs right now. One was a school resource officer. One grew up in this community and is a minister. So they're all kind of known to the community. But really, what they do is make outreach to these individuals. And the phone calls that they get back from some of the guys that we never thought would have talked to law enforcement is pretty impressive.
Nice to hear.
Yeah.
Wish others were here to hear it.
The other thing that we do under this strategy is our offender notification forums. Since July of 2012, the Police Department, in collaboration with the district attorney's office, the U.S. Attorney's Office, Department of Corrections and Community Supervision, so parole, Rancho Task Force, and Trinity have replicated the Project Safe Neighborhood offender notification forum. They're similar to call-ins, but they are individuals who are recently released from prison, have violent felony backgrounds, particularly involved in gun violence, so that they can hear kind of the unique consequences that they would have to engaging in violence again, particularly some of the federal sanctions that could happen, because that is a system that a lot of people don't know about. And again, that's a group of individuals, that I've been running those for a couple years, and that they want to take home guidelines, so that they can read them and understand them and share them with people is incredible. But they hear, not only from law enforcement, really, the people they want to hear from the most are Trinity Alliance and Snug, and are individuals who have gone through that criminal justice system and have turned their lives around, so that they have that support and that mentoring in order to be able to do that. We do these about five or six times a year now. To date, there have been 46 forums, and we've engaged 489 participants. The Non-Fatal Shooting Project is why I brought up those statistics a little earlier. These cases are much harder for us to solve. And we know that the community perception is that offenders aren't being held accountable for those non-fatal shootings that are occurring. So by taking a different approach, treating those non-fatal shootings similar to homicides, where you don't have the benefit of having a victim to get information from, jurisdictions like Newburgh and Utica, right here in New York, have been able to make an increase in the number of arrests they make. This allows us to take gun violence offenders off the streets and the community to feel safer. So this is a new project that we're working on and figuring out, getting help from both DCJS, Newburgh, and Utica on how to put it together.
So how do you... I would actually think it's harder, because you can have victims, and go, "That was a person." I mean, I would actually, if you have some work with gangs, it might actually be harder than...
So sometimes, right, so sometimes a strategy might not work. That is the difficult part, is when we have a victim who we know knows who the offender is, and they're not cooperative with us. But there's several strategies that these jurisdictions have used to kind of combat that and try to go around it and essentially treat the person, again, as if they were a homicide victim, so that we can just keep pushing forward. A lot of times in these cases, even though we have to close them because the victim's not cooperative, we do know sometimes who the offender is, but, you know, we have to kind of get around that fact a little bit with this project and kind of just push forward on some of these cases, because we're seeing a lot of repeat people that are doing the offenses, so.
So if I were a shooting victim and I knew who the perpetrator was, that person already shot me, I think I would be very concerned about, "They're going to shoot me again," if I snitch, if I say something about it. How do you overcome that fear or how do you address that?
I know that, and I know Snug can answer that question better than me, but I know that in my community, they say, "Stitches." So their fear, they'd rather not say anything, because they have a fear that the person is coming back. But if they don't say anything, it's all done, they don't have to worry about it anymore. They might move on to the next victim. But most likely, that person would never be shot again by that person. Is that how, most likely?
That could be most likely. I think part of the problem as well, and Snug can speak on this if they'd like, is that we don't want that person to then retaliate, right? So if we hold that other person accountable, we're able to do that without the victim, then we kind of take out that retaliation end of it as well, right? Because that's what we're seeing a lot, the back end was.
Yeah.
And it just, you know, and again, you guys are experts, it's, it only, and another reason is, it only starts a war, a big war. I'm telling somebody that this person wants retaliation, it's just, it's an ongoing thing, so.
Escalating.
Yeah, it escalates.
Did you guys...
Is that true?
She just, well, what she said, basically that, "All right, this guy, this guy shot me, but I may not do, I may not do nothing, but, you know, my people may do something." Because they know that person, that person told that he got shot. So, you know what I'm saying? So it becomes more of a big issue then.
But the point...
Getting shot's a big issue.
Or they were shot.
That's where you come up with the conflict is.
Right.
Because we deal with a lot of conflictation with at-risk youth. A lot of times, they, they use the older guys as well, you know? We try to come in before that even happens. So as soon as the person gets shot, or they're at the hospital, we're there already. And a lot of times, they deal with us because, a lot of times, I tell them, "We either know them, or we know someone that knows them." So they're more susceptible to deal with someone that they know. And they may bring that, you know, and they'll post that information to us, or alert us, or, you know? And we try to get in touch with the person that maybe they're selling, and we can try to conflict, try to change the narrative, not have the retaliation. Because basically, it's all just going to lead to more people getting shot. And that's what we try to bring up, you know?
May I ask your name?
I'm Shoukus. How you doing?
Judy Garcia.
Nice to meet you.
So he brings up a great point of, you know, there's a shooting, it may not be that person that retaliates, but then it's a member of their group that shoots at the other member of the other group, and then we have more of a... It's the back end.
So get in there and not...
And that's really what we try to get in there before it even leads to retaliation.
Because you saw that in 2018.
Correct. Yeah. And so, kind of perfect that we're right on this topic anyway, because Snug is our street outreach strategy. We are very lucky to have a well-established Snug here in the city already. They treat gun violence like a disease, identify its causes, and interrupt the transmission. They engage with those high-risk individuals who are engaging in gun violence, and they address the issues that prompt those individuals to use a gun. They try to change the community norms and attitudes that just accepts that violence is a part of life. They respond to the shootings to prevent retaliation and to help the family deal with kind of what's going on as a result of that. They help detect conflicts, and they work to resolve those peacefully before they lead to additional violence. We meet with them monthly, so that we discuss the trends. We provide the information on where the shootings are occurring, what the hotspots are, you know, what we kind of know. We also provide them referrals for those high-risk individuals who are coming out of prison. We know they're gang-involved. We know that there may have been a back and forth before they went into prison, and we want to make sure that that doesn't heat back up now that they're back on the street. We also let them know if there's anybody who had a criminal, a gun-related criminal history, so that they can engage with those individuals as soon as they're home, to make sure that they're on the right track to getting involved in the community.
Along those lines, I don't want to get off, but I understand the legislature passed the marijuana legislation today. And do you think, I mean, people involved before, a lot of people might be coming out of prison? Is that anticipated because of the legislation? Do you...
Which legislation?
The marijuana legislation. Okay, so, pardon me? I thought it passed according to...
In the Senate? I don't...
Well, then, if it didn't, but if it does, okay? And records are exposed of people that are in prison right now, and they're released, you could have a very large uptick in crime if you're saying, well, somebody's put away by somebody out on the street and this and that.
I don't know if they're retroactively going backwards on that, so I don't know the answer to that. I don't know which legislation was passed today.
Well, maybe it wasn't, and I thought I was going to know it. Few should vote short in the Senate. Does it vote?
Says a few, whatever that means.
Sorry, Mr. Trump.
No, that's quite all right. We're kind of right at the perfect time for those. Again, I want to make it really clear that the strategies that I discussed today is not our only strategies that we're using in regards to gun violence. These are just the ones that are really related to the Give Grant that we receive from DCJS. But I wanted to make sure that the council knew kind of what was going on, particularly as we know that July tends to be a tough month for us.
How many members of Snug are there currently? Do you have a sense?
7.5 FDAs.
There you go.
And what's, is that...
One director, one supervisor, and the rest are direct outreach workers.
So all the positions are filled, that's...
All, we're all full right now, yes.
Is that the highest that it's been?
Yes, because of, unfortunately, the blessing Elijah has, where the government granted specifically Albany an expert FD. And so we have...
Oh, wow, that's good.
An additional position. We also have, we also administer the program in Troy. And the other thing to mention is that DCJS, largely because of Trinity's advocacy and bringing to the attention of the powers that be, the powers of Lisa Good and Urban Grief and Healing, there will now be, in every site across the state, a full-time, clinically-trained, master-level trauma-inflamed clinician, as well as a case navigator. And that will allow us to really dig into the part of the population that is the victim that we traditionally maybe had to, you know, we were focusing on the shooters, but we all know that, as Lisa says, hurt people hurt people, so that now we can focus on that kind of resolution internally and stop that cycle. And in January of 2020, DCJS will also find a full-time position of another clinician at every level-one trauma hospital that's involved with the program, that being Albany meant for us. So we will also have an additional interface in the emergency room with a trained clinician who has been specifically prepared for this population.
So you just received the funding for the clinician?
Yes, that will start all this process.
That's great. That's one clinician that would be 40 hours a week, so they're not going to be there for every...
They will, they will respond. They will, they will respond exactly as the team does. If it's three o'clock in the morning, they'll respond to the emergency room or to the site, just like that, the the outreach workers, and then they'll figure out what's in their time of recording.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There's some people in the public or whatever, whatever they're doing.
I think they're with that.
Chris.
Do you have a question?
Just sit and rest him.
The hotspot, from two thousand and nineteen, you said it's on third and North Avenue. What's going on?
So we have, we had a couple of back-and-forth shootings um earlier on in the year. Uh we've made arrests in those cases. Um and they're currently with the District Attorney's Office. Um we did some enforcement up there as well on top of that. Um so right now, that's looking pretty good.
So now is that a still over from First and Quail or Second Judson or is it, they're all different players?
Uh it's a different group that that is up there, separate from 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 First and Quail, for sure.
How is this going over to the, you see the fights coming out of high school at times and this and that?
They tend to be completely separate.
Are they?
Yeah. Which is why we're not seeing kind of that juvenile sixteen, seventeen, eighteen age set as victims or perpetrators. They're they're fighting, um but they're, thank God, not bringing no guns.
At the age they're at right now.
Yeah.
So the other hotspot is um uh Judson and um-
Second Judson.
Second, Second and Judson.
Right now, we've got a big hotspot there, um First and Lex, First and Quail, Second and Judson.
So yeah, we was-
Is that the things in part?
No.
No.
No, it's down from this thing. We was just over there cleaning up with the chief and, you know, they, you know, they they keep us uh just doing stuff because it was a political, it's political year, and I said, "It's always a political year." Somebody's always ready each year, you know, um but um that is a that is a bad spot. I ride that way. I go that way every day. I just circle around my reward every morning.
Is it the people that are living on that block right now having a lot of conflicts? Is it dice games? Is it just a lot of guns there?
Well, it's a mixture of things because a lot of people that are running rocks don't live on the block. They hang out. They're from neighborhood, the surrounding areas, but they don't necessarily live on the block. They just hang around there for whatever reason. And being that they have issues, their issues get brought out over there. So that's what's the big issue is over there. A lot of them are not from that area. They're they're just hanging out.
What is the draw for that particular block? Is there, is there, you know, parties on a regular basis in one of the houses or?
No, no, it's just, it's just hanging out. That's plain with this hanging out, you know, yeah, dice games, uh just congregating, drinking, smoking.
But there must be certain properties that, you know, for whatever reason.
No, you do have people that do live over there, but the majority of the people that hang over there don't live over there. They know someone that may that may live over there. Or since they may have grew up in that area on that block years ago, so they go back to hang out because they know that's their comfortability. That's where they're from.
And and this, the age group of this particular group right now is there in that location? Is it like the twenty-five to thirty?
It could be, it it's more so fourteen to twenty-five.
Fourteen?
Yep.
Really, mine, yes, I guess I think in terms of, most of us had places where we lived and hanging in.
No, it's like going to data.
The city park, you know, the golf course, uh you know, somebody's house, McDonald's, and various people, so that's just their, what I'm hearing is that that's just their place. But I'm used to that being sort of phenomena with a little bit younger group. When you get a little older, then people are hanging out inside this house a little bit more.
It's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a crossword in the city, right? It's 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 where people are from, it's where they know people, it's where they're comfortable. They're hanging out there. There's the store that's there. Um you know, they're they're just congregating there and that's-
And because of such an environment, et cetera.
I'll show you, I mean, Judson, Wallace, we took care of a house that was, um we had one house that was hotspot and and it was, it got to be bad and the the two little girls, I say about nine and ten, chased this little boy home from school. And it was through the weekend, chased it, and the little boy go upstairs and he come back downstairs and he had a pistol. And the little girls went on the street. And you remember it? And then and then the grandfather comes over to me. By that time, the grandfather's standing there, and I'm standing in the doorway, but then everybody in the neighborhood was outside and all eyes was on me. So I waited a couple of hours and, which probably was wrong, but I waited a couple of hours and then I called Officer Wallace. And Officer Wallace came, took care of it, and he got the gun. But I was so scared that everybody was, you know, the the whole neighborhood was, because the grandfather came to me and the whole neighborhood is watching me now, so. I did, I waited a couple of hours, but then I called him and he came and uh found the gun, so.
The DA used to have a program where they put the signs up where you prevent people to congregate with-
Yeah, can you still get them signs?
Yep.
Is it enforced at all or does it work or?
Is it, is it enforced?
It's a trespass-half-day program.
Yeah, you can, the DA's all-
So you can register your address so that people can't hang out um on the steps or-
I said you can sign right over here amongst them.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But it's also on the tenants and the landlords to then say, "We need, we need help with this."
But I thought it could also come from the, can't come from the community. I mean, because can't they, the whole idea is to, that it becomes a problem property, right? And that the DA can eventually do something about it.
It depends what's happening.
So just a quick, uh you said there are three officers that are engaged. I thought there were four or four.
So we have three, they're to reach and connect, so the juvenile version of what we do, which is a little bit different. Not as focused on on that violence, but that's Nate LaWan. And then the other three are George Bryce, Brian Mascaro, and Mel Johnson.
Okay. And lastly, how does this initiative interface with any with the beats? Are they involved? I mean, obviously, they'd be a good, a great resource. They're in these neighborhoods, so.
Yep, and it is very much interfaced. Um that's the unit that I work out of. That's the unit that ESU and TRAC work out of. Um so kind of this runs out of that. Um but because there's so much investigative effort as well, our detective's office has a lot to do with this, but the beat officers are definitely a very large part of it, particularly when we talk about the hot addresses and the hotspots. Um because they know what those resources are. They have the relationships with the business owners. They have the relationships um with the residents as well.
Thank you, any-
You ever said, how much is, how much is the grant for?
Thank you.